I'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon. At this time, we'd appreciate if you turn your cellphones off or turn on vibrator. And this is a public hearing to adopt the tentative millage rate and budget. The purpose of this meeting is to set an alternative, a tentative millage rate and a tentative budget. The purpose, the proposed Walton County Board of County Commissioners countywide millage rate is 4.1060 mils. And 0.4912 mils for North Walton Mosquito Controlled District. In aggregate, this is a 18.40 percent increase over the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that would essentially generate the same adware tax revenue as last year. The countywide 4.106 mils, which was applied to the general county transportation, fine and forfeiture, in an increase over the fiscal year 2012-2013 rate, which is 3.5563 mils. The 0.4912 millage rate for the North Walton Mosquito Controlled District is the same as fiscal year 2012-2013 rate, which was 0.4912 mils. Mr. DeMears?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, the first slide I'd like to show you is the major changes that we have, staff has put into place based on your guidance from the last workshop we had in August. Next slide. You can see in this slide-
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Commissioners, the first slide shows the major changes that have taken place since the August workshop. You can see that we've added 1.767 million dollars to the solid waste budget. Majority of that was for the, 1.6 million for the condo garbage collection that you approved here just recently. And also, we added in the north side remediation and took out some of the equipment to help balance that out for a total of 1.767. Also, we added mobile health department operations at your request and the Saturday library operating hours. And then, we made some adjustments to the Freeport Fire Services, which resulted in a, there was gains and losses there, but the net result was an additional 21,000. Next slide. This slide shows you the total budget. The differences in, from last year to this year is approximately 14.4 million dollars. This slide will show you some of the highlights of that. I'd like to point out that the bridge, 6.46 million, does not impact adware taxes. That comes out of the one cent sales tax, a half cent sales tax. The TDC likewise does not impact adware taxes. That's from the bed tax collections. The building department has a slight increase. Again, that does not impact adware taxes. That comes out of the building permit fees. The sheriff's office is an increase of 1.68 million. And then, the condo garbage, condo garbage again does not impact adware taxes because it comes out of the solid waste fund, which is for the one cent sales tax. The remaining 1.8 million, the majority of that, it comes out of increases in retirement rates. For the county, that's about a million dollars over what it was last year. And then, the increase in Medicaid, 250,000. Next slide. This slide shows what the impact of the tax rate that you decide to set will have on our reserve fund balances. You can see across the top there, the different millage rates from 4.106 down to the current rate of what it was this year of 3.5563. And we have four major funds. The solid waste fund is not really affected by the millage rate because that, that comes out of the, of the one cent sales tax. As an example, if, if the millage rate was set at 4.106, it would leave a general fund reserve balance of a little over 10 million dollars for the general fund. And that's where we, we try to keep it around that figure so that should we have a hurricane or other type disaster, there's enough funds there to cover until FEMA money would kick, would kick in. And then, you can see down the line, road and bridge and fine and forfeiture, how they would be affected by the millage rate. Commissioner, subject to your questions.
Any questions?
Mr. DeMears, as far as the general fund reserve, that also has an effect upon our credit rating and our ability to bond and borrow money?
Yes.
Okay. And Gary, am I right when you and I were discussing that this morning, did I hear you to say that if we did not have, if we unfortunately had a tropical storm this year, I'm not going to use the H-word, and we needed to, we could take out of TDC reserves and replace it with FEMA money? Is that, or some reserve other than-
I don't know. We could take it out of there. I, I think in the past, we borrowed money-
Borrowed it, yeah, borrowed it and put it, yeah, back once we got FEMA money. Okay.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone here would like to speak? Yes, sir?
I want everybody in the hearing-
State, state your name for the record.
My name is Larry Semirad. I live in Santa Rosa Beach at 66 Dalton Drive. It's a sand and gravel road with a number of potholes. And as I see proposed property taxes going up, I wonder why. As you know, the economy has been very slow over the past five years. And I recently heard a report on National Public Radio, actually, it was last Tuesday, which cited a study from Florida International University saying that adjusted for inflation, the Floridian's median income has dropped 11 and a half percent since 2000. My wife and I, Sandy, work harder for less money. We've been doing this for the last five years. I have personally worked twice as hard for half as much. In order to pay our 2012 taxes, we had to dip into our limited savings. When I called the tax collector's, tax, excuse me, tax collector's office, I was told, when I asked for an extension with a payment plan, that if we did not comply immediately with the taxes, our house would be placed on auction. So, of course, we complied with difficulty. And that's why I'm here this evening, asking for no tax increase. Rather than an increase, I'm asking for a reduction in property taxes. Like me and my wife, many Walton County residents are also struggling financially. And I'm here this evening on behalf of all of us. We believe property taxes should be reduced at least 10 percent, not raised, to reflect the decrease which many, if not most of us, have seen in our incomes. I ask you to do the fair thing for the hardworking taxpayers in Walton County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question and comment.
Jackie, pull the thingy down. Thank you, ma'am.
I have no problem with the higher millage rate personally. I appreciate the services that it provides, and I don't want to see that drop.
Which one?
The higher millage rate, the 4.4 point, whatever the one was on the left.
4.106?
Right, 106. I, I just have a question. I missed a meeting, so you may have discussed this, and I missed it. But did we not have a budget for some new code officers in the budget?
No.
That doesn't make it in.
And I'm just curious, with the woefully inadequate staffing for code and so much request for code enforcement from the public, why would that not be budgeted in? I'm just curious about that. Because I think if, like Ms. Commissioner Meadows, at a lot of the town hall meetings you've been at, that I've been at too, that is one of the main topics of discussion at those meetings. And I'm just curious, why on earth we are not adding, as building starts to pick up, there's more activity, we're getting more tourists coming down, et cetera, et cetera, businesses are increasing their volumes, they are adding, we're adding new businesses. I mean, why are we not keeping up with code enforcement staffing?
Y'all want me to pitch in here?
Well, I probably can't answer the question, but I can tell you that as we move forward with some assessments of our organization, we hope we locate and identify some areas that may allow us to beef up our code enforcement if that's where we so choose. So, there may be some more opportunities in the next two or three months that will allow us to do some things.
Yeah. I, I think too, is that we, we talked about looking at code a different way. We talked about looking at the ordinance and perhaps making it not complaint-driven, but-
Enforcement-driven.
Enforcement-driven. And we take the top five or six issues, and I think we're looking at those, and we make sure that, you know, that, that's happening. And that, I think that we felt like, that until we get a handle on, on these kinds of things, that we didn't want to just add more people.
Yeah.
And I think that, that's kind of the bottom line, is that let's, let's use who we have, but let's use them more efficiently, and let's tweak some of the ordinances that perhaps are not being enforced, or that are being enforced, and that don't make that big of an impact. So, I think that's why we excluded any additional personnel.
And it's not only personnel, it's personnel and vehicles, you know, new vehicles. So, I think, you know, Mr. Jones is right, until we get a handle on it, and we need to, and I think we're working in that direction, you know, we can free up some money.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, but let's not be penny wise and pound foolish on an issue like this. I think the staffing has been woefully understaffed during the slow time, during the, when the economy tanked, that was one thing. But now that we are picking up, I think we are only going to see more areas where code, code enforcement is going to be needed. And when you say there might be some other opportunities, what does that mean exactly? Like what-
We're going to do some assessments throughout our organization of the, our current assets and our current staffing levels. And as we move some things around, there may be opportunity to shift some funding and/or personnel, not personnel bodies, but FTEs into code, if that's what the board so desire.
Okay.
We haven't identified that yet, but that's certainly one of the things we're going to do in, in short order, is do some NSPs.
I just ask you not to be penny wise and pound foolish on this one.
One other thing that we're doing too, is we're meeting on these different ordinances, and we're trying to close the gap between how does it become a violation and catch it in the beginning, so that our guys are out there looking at it, either while it's being built, or, you know, just, and make sure that it doesn't go down the road and then become a code violation.
Well, that's encouraging.
So, so I've met with Larry, Mr. Jones, a couple of times on different ordinances, where we can close the gap in the very beginning.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're looking for some efficiencies there.
Okay, thank you.
Any, yes, sir?
My name is Chester Carter, District 1. I'd like to speak against any increase in taxes. The constitutional officers in this county have devalued my land, but my millage is up. I don't understand how my valuation could go down and my taxes go up. Could you explain that to me and to other people in this county? So, I think you people need to tighten your belt and do like the rest of us, and live within your means. That's what I think. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm JB Hillard, resident of Funniac. I have comments and questions. On the slideshow you showed a few minutes ago, on the TDC figure and also the bridge figures, about approximately eight and a half million dollars, that is being shown as one of the reasons for the tax increase. I've spoken to Mr. Jones about this, and briefly to Mr. Bagley, and I, I'm not satisfied with the answer of, I'm not sure what the answer was, to tell you the truth. But where, you have a bridge tax, and you have a TDC bed tax that pays those fees, yet it's being included in the budget, which would increase the adware tax. There's some kind of hocus pocus there I don't understand. I'd like for that to be explained, and how can you carve that out, because it's already being taken care of with sales tax and bed tax? But is this an unintended consequence that when we have these sales tax and bed tax, and you include this in the budget, that it increases adware tax too? It doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Jones? Can I have a shot at that? If you take a look at the slide, it says, why did the budget go up, not the, not the tax rate? It says, why did the budget go up over last year? And the county is required to account for all the money that comes in, and the additional revenue that's coming in from the bed tax, and additional revenue that's coming in from the half cent sales tax must be included in the county's budget that's reported to the state. And therefore, that's part of the increase of the budget. And it wasn't, wasn't stated that this was part of the tax increase.
Okay. Let me ask you this. If it's in the budget, then you have, you know, you have income to, to pay for the budget, right?
That's correct, but it's accounting for both your income and your expense, so it has to be added to the, the numbers that we didn't have last year. For instance, last year's budget time, you didn't have a, a bridge commitment at that time. So, it's going to be, they're going to have to pay 6.4 million dollars on principal and interest this coming year. So, they're going to account for the, the half cent sales tax revenue coming in and the 6.46 million of principal and interest that's going out. But we have to account for it to the state, so therefore, it's added to the budget, but not as, not as a component of your property taxes.
So, you're saying it is not, it figured in adware tax?
That's correct, it's not.
Is that correct? Okay, I appreciate that. Another comment I have is on the sheriff's budget. He has in, in there an amount of money for school resource officers. I don't think anybody in this room is against what he intends to do. However, I've read several interviews, public interviews, where he has made the statement that no matter what happens on the, whether or not he gets this increase or not, he's going to do it anyway. Well, to me, that tells me there's enough leeway in his current budget without an increase for these resource officers. If he can do it anyway, why is he asking for additional funds? I don't think that should be included in the budget. It should be taken out to help reduce adware tax and let him work within the budget. He's already said he'll find ways within the budget, his current budget, if he has to, so that should be done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm Andrew Newitt, and it's from Sandusson. Thank you for the answer, Ms. Anfield, about the reason for the bridge and the TDC budget being increased by those amounts. Are you saying though, that the increase in the expenses is offset by income from the sales tax and the bed tax?
For those two components, yes, sir.
So, it's really, as far as any increase in budget, it's, I mean, the income offsets the expense, is what you're saying?
Right. We're required by state statute to report all the income as part of the budget. And since this was a new income item for the bridge and an increase item for TDC, we have to report it and the offsetting expenses that go with, no effect on property taxes.
Right. So, therefore, the question remains from this gentleman before, why 4.106? Why the increase to 4.106 for the millage, which would bring in, according to Mr. Pridgen, 18 percent more in revenue? Why is there 18 percent more revenue from the property tax? I haven't seen from this gentleman any reason for the property tax being increased. You've answered clearly, the sales tax and the bed tax offsets the increase in the budget. Why is adware tax going up? That's the only question I have, and hopefully, hopefully, that'll be explained. Thank you.
I believe one of the slides you had, Gary, shows why there was the increase in the budget, and at least three of the components dealt with impacts on property taxes. One is the sheriff's budget, the retirement rates, and the Medicaid increases. They had a significant impact on why additional property taxes were needed.
And, and also too, I'd like to add to that. If you look in the FTEs, the sheriff is requesting 10 additional people, and he's requesting 1.68 million. Somehow, that thing went off, yeah. And if you look at the increases in retirement rates and Medicaid increases, but you also notice that the clerk of court's asking for two people. And, you know, I, that's, that's where-
Yeah. I've looked at a lot of charts, and I'm sure you all, maybe more than I have, but I don't understand that. I mean, that looks to me like it says-
Well, it's very confusing, I agree.
It's not very clear, sir.
It's very confusing because-
It's not only very confusing, it's just, it just doesn't make sense.
It, it really should say, everything over and above last year's budget-
Exactly.
That's not a wash-
Exactly.
Would include-
That's what the staff ought to present to you all as a budget.
Yeah.
They ought to, they ought to be responsible to present to you, this is last year, this is this year, and this is the reason. That doesn't, what was presented to you, hopefully, you all have gotten that information in other meetings and not in this public meeting, and hopefully, you understand, because I can tell you that I don't understand it yet.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's not very clear. Bob Murfin, in LaBeech. Looking back at my term notices, I see that this is the first substantial increase in, I think, four years, in the millage rate. And during that time, the CPI has been, on average, about 2 percent, 3, 1 and 1/2, about 2. So, 8 percent's accounted for there, we're looking at 12 percent plus or minus. That's a big hunk at once. I'm, I'm sure that you're aware of that, but as folks have expressed, that, that's, that comes out of people's pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
Don Riley, live in Miramar Beach. I'm the president of the County Taxpayers Association, as well as president of my condominium association. JB and I met with Commissioner Pridgen and Mr. Jones this past week and discussed this budget proposal. And there were questions left unanswered amongst which are, in particular, there is no possible means of cutting expenditures, existing expenditures. There are no inefficiencies that can be found in the execution and payment for our county government. Somehow, that seems a bit unlikely. The Taxpayers Association, as yet, does not have a position on this. I think that it is fair to say that we probably will. This coming week, we've been waiting on this hearing to formulate a position paper on this. I think it's a reasonable assumption to say that we're not going to be in favor of any 13 percent or thereabouts increase in the millage rate. And the question is, should there be an increase at all? We certainly don't believe that a 13 percent increase in one year is warranted. I can tell you that if you want to unite North and South Walton, a 13 percent increase in the millage rate this coming year is one darn good way to do it. The only expressions that I've heard, both at my condo association board meeting, as well as in talking with other members of the community and seeing emails, is outrage is probably the best single word to characterize those reactions, how dare they talk about that large an increase? Whether outrage is warranted or not, I think some disbelief at the very least is. I would urge that y'all seriously consider a much, much smaller increase and send staff back to work on cutting down on this budget some. There are certainly efficiencies that can be found, I think we'd all agree. We may not know what they are, but they're there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Smith from Seagrove. Help me understand that the assessed property value went up this year by 600 million dollars?
Is that, is that the number? Hang on a second.
State assessment's property.
I think it's in here somewhere. Can somebody have that figure?
Okay, well, well, my point is this, okay? 600 million dollars. So, if you have no tax increase, you automatically have an increase by that assessed value. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
So, can't you, can't you live within those means all by itself? 600 million dollars.
Let's come to order.
Well, yeah, we need to come to order, we need to come to our senses on this. The, the system has built in, because of the assessed property value, an increase for you. Please, use common sense and listen. And as the gentleman before me said, if you want to unite the North and the South, this is a great way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Judy Cupero from Freeport, Florida. I'm just, mostly want to echo what I've heard most of the other people say, when this constantly increase of everything is affecting real people. People are having trouble making ends meet, and if they're able to save anything back, every time tax time rolls around, it's gone and more. So, just try to figure out a way to do more with less, or, or either just do less, because it's, it's not sustainable on people to keep, there's, there's got to be an end to it somewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
The fundamental fact of the matter is, your income is going up 5.2 percent based upon the current revenue forecast and the current millage. CPI went up 1.9 percent. Do the math. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Mr. Hudson?
My name is Bob Hudson. I'm a resident of Santa Rosa Beach, Florida. There were some slides that were up here earlier, and people are very confused by one of those slides. And I want to make sure that I understand, and I think I do, the basic, there is no difference between the budget, between the 4.106 and all the way down to 3.55. All the difference- way down to 3.55. All the difference is, is how much money we put in the bank above what we need to operate. In a meeting this afternoon, I discussed with Mr. DeMirs and Ms. Quimby what your reserve requirements are. In other words, how much should you have to weather that storm between October and November, when you're not collecting ad valorem sales tax? I mean, collecting sales tax, but not ad valorem tax. And, and everybody says, well, you know, we've been using reserves in the past few years, and I understand we've been using reserves in the past few years, but no one has ever answered that question for me. What are our current reserves, and what do we believe that we need to maintain in reserves? Somebody says, well, we might have a hurricane. I said, sir, I'll use the word. We might have a hurricane. Well, there are different classifications of fund, fund balance, reserves that you have. Some of those are assigned, some of those are unassigned, some of those are restricted fund balance. My understanding is, at the end of last year, you had about a total reserve balance of about $78 million. Some of that is unassigned within the general fund. I asked the question, could you borrow funds from interfund bonds, what are called, if you did have a hurricane? And I was told, well, yeah, we've done that in the past. So I'm saying to you today, the difference, as far as I can see, there's only about $3 to $4 million worth of true budget increase that's there. And then you've had someone talk to you about the $600 million worth of increase in property values. You can't just multiply that by the millage rate, because there are other factors that affect that. But the real question to you is, is this, is this the time to increase your fund balance by that amount of money? I believe you have adequate reserves when you look at the total picture, not just at one small segment of your general fund balance. But ultimately, that's the decision you're making. You're not making a decision, as far as I've heard. I've heard no discussion about, well, why are we funding school resource officers? No one disagrees with you that that's a key and vital service. I serve. Just one more. I served on the school board, and the number one priority that I had was school safety. My question to you is, if it's that important to the school board, why are they coming to you and asking you to fund a portion of their operating budget? How many times are you going to take the hit for increasing taxes to help out another taxing authority? Because if, if that's the picture that we're in, I serve on a taxing authority, and I'll line up just behind, like everybody else, and come in here and say, bail me out. I don't want to go up on a millage rate. I'm going to. Don't mind telling you, we'll vote to do that. I will. But those are questions that I think the public needs to understand. What we're talking about is how much more money we throw in the bank, not how much more service. We're not cutting any services. We're not increasing services. What we're doing is throwing money in the savings account. And there are those that have stood before you today and said, I've dipped into my savings account, and asking you not to dip in one more time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions that came up during this. What was the increase in the juvenile justice? Do we have an increase in that this year?
Originally, at the workshop, we showed an increase in juvenile justice, and several counties sued the state and won that lawsuit, and that was reduced back down to no increase.
Okay, okay. And also, what are the revised numbers on the aid to other fire departments' budget? What's, what's the total 2014 number that's recommended?
The only one of those that changed would have been the Freeport Fire.
Okay.
That is now going to be...
21,000?
No, I think it's 75 or 65, something like that.
339, 848 total.
The total will be 339, 848.
For Freeport?
No, for the countywide.
For the countywide, so that's down from what we had projected before at 512.
Yes.
We had 512 to 339. Okay. Also, too, let's see, the sheriff's budget, the 1.68, where are we on the school resource? Where are we on that, and what are the numbers on that now, on the six resource officers?
We have budgeted 444,000 in there as coming from the school board. Our understanding from the paper today was that amount's going to be 307,000.
That's coming from the school board to pay for, how much is the total?
Would you say the school board's amount one more time? I didn't...
We, we budgeted, in this budget that you're looking at tonight, 444,000 as revenue coming from the school board. We're now learning that that may be 307,000 instead of 444, so we're going to have a shortfall there. We may have to dip a little further into the fine and forfeiture reserve in order to make up that difference.
If I may, I can address part of that. You received a letter from us, I think, in the last two weeks or so, advising you of the change in revenue status, projected change in revenue status from the school board, based on some mandates they were facing. Obviously, this kind of came at the last minute for us. This is not something we were projecting. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Hilliard on part of it, which is, if it's vitally important, and you understand it's vitally important, then you've got to put some skin in the game from our standpoint as well, too. One of the things we've adopted is tried to adopt some lean Six Sigma principles, and we're trying to look at some other ways to be more efficient. I mean, I can identify and believe that we can get to at least half of the amount we were asking, about $100, give or take $35,000 ballpark, try and meet it. So what I'd need from the board... I'm sorry.
What was the, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What was the total amount that was needed for the, for the, for the school resource officer?
For the new adds of the renewed school resource office, I believe, was $265,000?
That was for the new ones, right?
That was for the new ones, yes, ma'am, that's correct. And what I am proffering is that we'll find a way to come up with half of it. You know, certainly, it will be painful from that standpoint. It's not, it's not a situation that won't require some reassessment. So from my standpoint, I would ask the board if there's any opportunity to make it and meet us halfway in that regard.
Can I ask...
Now, oh, yes, ma'am.
No, no, go ahead.
Two things I want to add about that. One is, I've already spoken to the superintendent, and I plan at some point, work with their school board for the future, because this is a, if this is going to be an ongoing expenditure, we need to identify a source, and that's just the reality from that standpoint. So that's certainly, we're going to have to look at and see that there's something where they can find a way to do that. You know, as a, I'm not a legislative body, so I'm, what we do is very expensive, certainly. We're going to try and go back to them and see where we can reexamine that. That'll give us at least a year to project and look into what's available from that standpoint. And as a point of clarification, I just want to add, we actually did not add 10 positions. I'm not sure where that came from. We only added the six school resource deputies, is what we had.
Okay, that, that was in a report that we had at the...
We saw that. We actually spoke to Mr. DeMirs about that previously.
So it's really six?
At the budget workshop, I thought there was two deputies and two office positions that were being added. One was in human resources, and I don't have the minutes from that meeting in front of me, but there were, there were two deputies, two office, and six school resources.
No idea. The only part I could think of has to do with the alternation of people inside, in other words, sworn to non-sweared, would be my, really the only thing I could come up with. The total FTEs didn't change. The only FTE change, from our standpoint, was the six that we've added. Now, we did add the bailout that was requested by the board, but that was added last year, so I didn't include that as a new add.
Okay. So your, so your request of 1.68 million, tell me again what that includes?
The majority of that increase were statutory mandates from retirement changes and the school resource, adding the additional school resource deputies. There is a $230,000 IT thing that is in there as well. That's really its end of life cycle, and that goes back to being penny wise or pound foolish. We're kind of at a point now that we want to get on the board's cycle of replacing IT before it becomes prohibitively expensive, from that standpoint. That's really, the majority of it has to do with the personnel added, the one added mid-cycle last year, and the six added this year, so that's...
For these school resource officers, and y'all can tell me if, is there any way that we could hire part-time people that would go to the schools during school hours, and then, of course, they'd be off in the summers, instead of hiring six new people, adding benefits and, and insurance and workers' comp and all that, and they're going to be not in the schools the entire time?
Yeah, you know, that's something we're actually exploring as well. Part of the problem comes from state mandates. It's gotten to the point now that the state requires us to do so much training, and there's so much liability involved with it, it becomes difficult. We're actually exploring the possibility of having retirees, auxiliaries that meet a certain level of training as they fill in. That certainly makes sense. The one positive, actually, there's multiple positive benefits. From a, from a manpower standpoint, the thing that makes sense to us, at least with school resource deputies, we're able to use them during summertime, spring break, some of those. So we, we get that double use to them from that standpoint. But we're certainly looking at it as well, part-time. And I will say this, when you're talking about students, one thing I think that we've probably done a little better than we have in the past, is we're careful about who we put in the schools. You know, we want people that want to be around children, that want to mentor children, that provide positive experiences. So we definitely want people that want to be in there. And I think we can, I go back to your original question. I think we can find some folks, and we're going to explore that as well.
But don't they, won't they have to be certified to carry a gun?
It's more, and it's more than certi, I mean, it's more than certified. It's so much training that's required to do that, you know, it's just...
You just can't get Uncle Joe to come and stand in the...
Right. Just because you have concealed weapons permit, you know, we can't use them necessarily to do that. But there are opportunities there. I do believe that for the future.
May I ask, you say it's 265,000 to fund the six deputies in school?
That's correct.
Six additional.
That's additional.
Additional.
That's six, six at 265.
Yes, sir.
Okay, 40,000 per deputy.
20,500 is what the school board is paying for six, or for the nine total. They're paying 20,500, which is half of the base salary of a starting deputy. No capital cost or anything of that nature in there.
Don't you have to add cars?
Yeah, I'm still, you got cars, I mean, that's where I'm going.
We're, we're, listen, we're...
Uniforms, and, you know, you have to have them.
We're, from that standpoint, our fleet, we're in, we're in trouble with our fleet. There's no two ways around that. We are using cars with, I think we have something in excess of 110 cars that have higher than 120,000 miles on them, but we're, we're trying not to come back to you and say, can you buy us cars this year? So we understand that. There is obviously a pretty significant cost. The short answer is it's coming out of pool. It's coming out of our pool, as long as we can maintain that. But that is becoming increasingly difficult overall. And unfortunately, there will come a point with these vehicles, and I know the board is in the same situation with your equipment, that you guys are facing that, you know, there's going to be a reckoning for this at some point.
Sheriff, in your discussion with superintendent, as of right now, you're about 137 shy of what it's going to take to fund those SROs.
That's correct.
Has there been any concession on the part of the superintendent to help on that 137,000 that's due, and the fact that 75 percent of those deputies' times is spent in the schools?
I can't speak to some kind of that part. She understands, and we've spoken about for the future, about trying to find some, some alternative funding. My main concern today was to try and keep them as viable. I understand the fiscal responsibility, but that's something we're going to have to go back and, and work out to the superintendent and school board as well, and say, listen, you know, obviously, we want to do a more equitable share in dealing with this, and I understand the fiscal responsibilities that you at the board is facing. I would tell you, if it wasn't such, this is just one of those things, unfortunately, is the cost of doing business for me, in this standpoint. But we're going to look at ways to try and find to be more accountable in the way we do it, reassign some folks, if that's what it takes. You know, and again, we've had about a month to look at this, before we realized this funding was not going to come, the revenue stream was not going to come through. So we're definitely trying to find some alternatives.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
About any part of our budget at all, please, free to ask.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any other questions? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Nielsen, and I do have a question for Sheriff Atkinson and for you all. Are any of the school resource officers afforded or use overtime? Is there any circumstance at all, ever, in their previous prior budgets, that school resource officers are paid overtime? Do they have an answer?
Sheriff?
Yes, ma'am. There's something that was scheduled by the school, that was paid by the school board, but unfortunately, this year, one of the things we're looking at trying to absorb that is, we've had deputies volunteer to work some of these events that they normally have been paid for, trying to flex schedules, find a different way to do it. We're not scheduling overtime for them this year. Does that make sense? We're going to try and find a way to either have someone come work additional shifts, volunteer time, whatever we can do, as best we can do.
Number, question two. What are those occasions that overtime has been used in the past for what types of activities, other than the educational hours during the day?
Large student gatherings, for the most part. I would say that's probably, anything that you have, something of nature of ballgame that gets to a certain size, football game would be one that comes right off the top of my head.
Okay, so those are social events?
They are.
Okay. My concern to you is, I feel that all money for all resource officers, period, should be pulled out of the BCC budget completely. They should be lock, stock, and barrel. The source of funding should come from the school board. You are, you should be paying Sheriff Atkinson and his budget to keep the people on the street, to look at the global needs of our community, but the specific, because the school board is a special taxing district, vehicles are there, there's insurance, there's overtime, there's retirement funds, there's all of this and that for the school system. That should be an entirely line item into the school board budget. They are a separate taxing authority, and we then can, can look at apples, apples and oranges to oranges. When we're looking at a school board budget, we then can look at what the cost of resource offices are for during the day, during the educational hours, they are mandated to be there. Social events should be carried by the parents. We should not be carrying social event coverage on, on the rest of us, but that is a school board issue, and that's for the, for the hearing about the school board budget. But I think we need to pull out all resource officers out of your budget. It will clean your budget up, it will straighten up some things, and it will put the onus onto the school board. I think it's time to be serious about this. There has been some emotional reaction to what happened in Connecticut, and it's a tragic state of affairs that our country has come to, and I understand the need and the desire of the parents. And I understand the, the need and the desire of elected officials not to get everybody upset and to provide them what they're asking for. But we are in difficult financial times. I have multiple senior citizens calling me saying, what are they doing to us? What are they doing to us this year? 13 percent, it's outrageous. I lived on fixed income, and I'm watching all my interest income, the interest rates just going down to the tube till they're almost nothing. So where am I going to divvy up what income I have, and how am I going to pay these bills? So it's not like they can go out and get a new job when they're elderly. They're on this fixed income, and they saved all their lives to have this interest income. I think you need to pull back all those resource officers out of this budget and put it onto the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'll give you.
I'll let you finish. I'm probably going to be long.
Thank you again for the opportunity to participate in government. I think a good example of what we're talking about here as citizens is demonstrated by the man that sits up here that we pay 128K a year. When I had my company, if I paid a man 128, and I did, he was accountable. He answered questions. We're paying a man 128K, and we're wondering why we're having to raise taxes, when we've got three more people back here presenting a slideshow. Now what sense does that make? I, I don't understand, and I believe some other people here probably don't understand either. If that doesn't make sense to you, then I don't, I think you're a long way from the private sector of this country who has to make ends meet. Thank you.
A question is, on one of these handouts, I guess my, my response would be, don't show me how much money, what the millage rate would be assigned to, to get the reserves to a certain point. Show me how much money we would have to cut from the budget on each of these millage... Show me how much money we would have to cut from the budget on each of these millage rates. In other words, if we wanted to stay at three-point-five-five-six-three, what would we have to cut from the budget? How much? Three-point-seven-five, how much would we have to cut from the budget? Three-point-nine, how much would we have to cut from the budget? Four-point-one. I agree with Mr. Hudson. You know, we shouldn't be looking at funding our reserves while they're important. We really need to be looking at what our expenses are and how much we're spending, and how can we cut those to get to a millage rate that's reasonable? So, I guess that would be my question. I'd like to know what would need to be cut, what amount would need to be cut from each of those to get to those numbers?
But also, don't you think it'd be wise to go back and look at what we can work with the constitutional officers and public works, go across the board and see where we can trim some more?
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be very important, to look at how we can, you know, I'm sure there's ways that we can look at bringing this down some and also looking at reserves. I mean, we need to look, you know, a lot of them express their concerns about, you know, it's hard times. People has to go to, getting in financial trouble, has to go, if they got a savings account, get money. So, going to reserves would be like going to a savings account to get money out of to get us by. Till next year, it may, we may have an opportunity to look at it more proactive in looking at how we can put money back in reserves, we have to. So, you know, I think we need to look at how we can trim this, this down as far as we can get it to go. I don't think we should go below three-point-five-five-six-three.
Well, you know, Kenneth, one of the things that I've been suggesting for a number of years now, and I know everybody wants to pave roads, we all want to pave roads till we get them, then we complain about people drive too fast on them. But we have a great number of roads in this county that we've already paved that are desperate to be maintained. The shoulders need to be fixed, mowing needs to be done. There's so much that we, we could, for just one year, if we decided not to do any major paving, other than something we just had to do, and of course, remember when we're talking about cutting stuff, we've now got to throw in three, thirty A with the hole in it. We've got to put that in the budget somewhere. But if we just did, number one, if we just did maintaining the roads that we have for one year, that would cut substantially out of the, the cost of material budget out of public works. I had a discussion this morning with Louis about travel, how much we spend in this county on travel. Even if it's from down, not for a public hearing like this, but for a staff meeting, why don't we try to invest in, like, webcams? So, our people aren't, first of all, on the road spending gas, because it costs you more to put gas in your tank, well, it costs the county more to put gas in our tanks. So, if we could do webcamming, whatever you call that, rather than having all the staff, you know, drive to Funiac or drive down here, what's wrong with using webcams? And there again, our vehicles are getting really old, and we need to look at a way of parking every vehicle we can, taking another look at vehicles and how we use them, and, because we're going to be in a bad shape as a sheriff before too long, we're going to be desperate, and all of us need vehicles and the money not be there. I like what the lady said about, from Freeport, said about taxes are paid by real people. If you've ever been in my office, I have a little thingy on my computer that's, my daughter told me when I first took office in two thousand and six. She said, "Mama," because she had gotten her tax bill for the first time, she was newly married and all that, and she says, "Mama, taxes are paid by real people." And that's the expression that lady in Freeport, and, and that's true, but we're all real people too, so we understand, you know. It's, what services do you want us to cut out? What do you want us to cut, you know? I'm willing to do it, you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, I had, I had them run, run out what we spent as of July eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, in certain categories. And I think we need to look at overtime and other salaries were close to one-point-four million. Health, life, and disability insurance, three-point-six million. Professional services...
What was that, first, second one, senior? I didn't catch it.
Insurance.
Insurance, okay.
Insurance, health, life, and disability insurance, three-point-six million as of July, so that's almost half the, you know, year. It's going to be more, because we go to October. Professional services, one-point-one-four million dollars. I think that we need to get a, a definite handle on consulting fees, consulting expenses. Some of these contracts are not being well-managed. I think we could pinch, pinch some dollars there. Other contractual, which I'm, I'm sure is waste management, is eight million. We're going to renegotiate that contract, I believe, so we need to tighten up on that. Utilities, we spend a million point-one dollars, a mil-, one million, one-hundred-thousand dollars on utilities, and this is just as of July. We need to look at ways that we can decrease that. We, we spend almost half a million dollars on rentals and leases. You know, do we need to just give people gas money and say, "Use your own car"? I mean, you know, at some point, you know, the local governments just cannot provide, you know, we just can't, can't keep providing that. Other insurance is one-point-three million. So, repairs and maintenance, one-point-two million. Road materials, four-point-four million. Operating supplies, three-point-three million. I, I tend to think that, that that's, we shouldn't really cut our road paving program, because that's kind of what the government's all about. You know, that's what we're supposed to be providing. But I think statutory contributions are things that we have to put in, three million dollars, that we have to send out of the budget to the state or somewhere else, because the legislature said so. And I think a lot of people here tonight, talking to us, you need to talk to your state legislature, because a lot of this stuff is coming from them. A million dollars in pension in order to make up for the policies that they ran with for decades with the state pensions. So, you know, you guys, us, we're feeling the, you know, they're passing it on down, down, down the ladder, and that's where we are. The constitutional officers, almost seven million dollars. The court system's almost a million, and, and it just kind of goes on and on. So, I think that there's some places that we could, we could look at cutting so that we could get back to three-point-five-five or three-point-seven-five, to me, at the max.
And I tend to agree with you that, that it's ultimately on our shoulders, but there again, a lot of the public is not aware, like the fine and forfeiture fund, they took it away from the sheriff in order, you know, send it to Tallahassee. But yet, in that same, they turned around and put all the cost of the court system, which is, you know, Mr. Alfred's bailiwick, on our shoulders. So, a lot of the things that we have to pay for and have no choice, we have no control of.
Right, and the legislators have emails as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're in Tallahassee, but, you know, they're not, we don't see them, so, you know, it's, so, that's what, what I see when I keep looking at all these numbers, I keep thinking, you know, it's being passed down to the very end, and that's us.
You know, if there's any light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully by this time next year, Love's will be online, and that will help us tremendously. Well, with our gas tax money, if, if Love's will be online, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
Next year, which will help with our gas tax, hopefully.
And speaking of Love's, you know, the, the, I think some of the things that we could maybe use that money for is, you know, to fund our part of the EDA, to fund, you know, things like that, to get them off of our plate and concentrate on roads, fire, police, health.
Well, and it's a topic, time topic for it, but I think, again, it's time to take a serious look at the EDA, what they're doing, where they're going.
I, I agree.
Because Love's is a result of, of people in this room and, and Mr. Jones, not the EDA.
Yeah, I, I would not argue with that. Yep.
Carleen's...
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Jones, Mr. Davis. It's like being in the room and everybody's talking about you, and you're sitting right there, and does anybody notice? Carleen Anderson, Superintendent of Schools for the Walton County School District. All over the state, we have school districts in the same situations we are. Ms. Nelson mentioned emotional legisla-, emotional decision-making in regards to SRDs. It's happening all over the nation, not just in Walton County School District. What we're seeing this year is, of course, a tight budget in the school district, as well as with the county commissioners. Tomorrow night, I will be presenting to our board the millage rate and the proposed budget for the school district as well, knowing that we have also an increase, which is required by the state. Unfortunately, we don't get to make a choice, should we increase or should we not? In our general operating, there is no decision, should we or should we not? The board and I know fully well that under the required local effort, the state requires it, therefore, we must do it. Also, I have to present a budget to the board that has a three percent fund balance. It is my job and my requirement to have them a balanced budget with a three percent fund balance at the end of this school year, or the fiscal year. In talking with the sheriff about the SRDs, throughout the state, you'll find districts who pay a portion, like we do, fifty percent of the base salary, which has been our common practice throughout for many years. You'll find some school districts where the sheriff's department pays the entire salary. These employees, the SRDs, are not our employees as a school district. We don't, we don't hire them. The sheriff hires them, he sets the salary, he sets the, he pays the retirement and the benefits. They're not our employees. As I said to the sheriff one day, someone like run a cop. But I want, I want to be sure that everyone understands that SRDs are not just there for the children. It's, it's great, they're wonderful with our children, and in most recent years, as he says, he's been very careful about the selection of who goes in our schools. But the important thing is, is they're not there just for the children. Within the first few weeks of school, we've had SRDs to respond to one particular elementary school, two different occasions where we had to have parents removed, aggressive parents. In another situation, in elementary school, we had to have two parents who had to be arrested because they were fighting on the campus. These are not students' problems, these are adult problems. This is the fear that we have in education, and it reigns throughout this, this United States, of people coming and bringing their problems to the schools. These are not our children that are having these problems. We have capable staff, teachers, administrators, who have handled our children's problems for years. Our fear now are the adults that come onto our campus. Our fears now are the people who come to us with their vendettas. That's our biggest concern. If they were not in our schools, the SRDs, they would be responding from the road every time a parent came and wanted to confront a principal, becoming aggressive, or to confront another parent in the parking lot and getting into a physical fight. So, I just wanted to be sure everyone understood, this just isn't for children. What I did this year, we had not planned on the SRDs as of the beginning of last school year, because of Sandy Hook, the sheriff called and said, "I'd like you to help, help out with the elementary for a while." We did that till the end of the year. We discussed again, how can we budget it for this year? How can we do that? Because it's not getting better, it's getting worse, with people who come with their fears and their concerns to our schools. And so, we took every bit of our Safe Schools money. I used to pay other things out of our Safe Schools money. I put all those things aside and said, "Nothing's more important right now. We need to take all of our Safe School funds and put them toward the SRDs and try and maintain all of them this year." I even am going to the board, and this is in their budget tomorrow night, and they're aware of it, eighty thousand dollars additional outside of our Safe School budget, are monies that we'll put toward, toward these SRDs. This is, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, any parents that get in the fight in the parking lot, can't you send them the bill? I mean, if we arrest...
I would love to, I would love to.
I mean, seriously, if...
But we cannot. Those are public services provided by our sheriff's department, even if they are on our dime or his dime, it doesn't matter. We did pay overtime last year, and we call them social events. Whenever there is a, remove the fact that it's a school event, anytime there's a social event, such as parades, or chautauquas that we've had in the past, there, there are sheriff's deputies there, just because when you have a crowd, you raise the, the liability of something happening. And so, take away the fact that it's a school event, it's a large crowd event, there usually are sheriff's deputies there. We did pay overtime last year, because we're required to pay, when they go over their forty hours, we're required to pay overtime. This year, we have no overtime money. I've put all the money that I can, that I can afford to give in the budget for the board to consider, with no overtime being paid. We're being, trying to be very creative by using auxiliary deputies, cutting down the number of times that we ask for deputies to be at these athletic events, other events. We're going to bare minimum on where we put them and how often we need them, and we, we are going so far as to say, anybody who shows up, excuse me, in their uniform, you'll, we'll let you in the game free, just if you'll help us maintain some order in these events. So, anybody that shows up, auxiliary, city police, will let them in. Anybody who has a student who's in, a, a child in school, and they are with the police department or the sheriff's department, and they show up, we will let them in free, if they'll just come in their uniform, because that in itself is a deterrent. So, we are trying to find other ways to cut the cost of our SRDs. But I did want you to be aware that, you know, the purpose of having the SRDs is not just for our children. That's the primary source of, of concern, is the safety. But the safety includes big people too. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I have mixed feelings about the SROs, the SRDs. On one hand, I question whether or not they perhaps, and, and the sheriff and I talked about it, do any good, because if I'm going to, if I want to shoot somebody and get in that school, I'm going to find a way. But he also pointed out to me that these kids trust these deputies, and they tell them sometimes things that are happening at home or happening other where, that they wouldn't tell anybody else, which, you know, abuse and that sort of thing. I have two children at West Funiac. I know what level of comfort it gives my daughter dropping off her children and the other parents. I've had a lot of parents talk to me about this, and, and of course, we feel like on my side, when you're a senior citizen, you don't have any kids, it's not so important. But if you have children in school, it's important to them. I'd like to, to see a way that by next year, that somehow the school board could absorb the entire amount, because it is a school board issue, but yet it is a citizens' issue. We're all, the, the family here, I mean, whether you have kids in school or not, you know, the children are all of our responsibilities. And God forbid, if somebody broke in one of Walton County schools and, and shot our kids, what would we all do? We'd all be horrified and wonder where the deputies were. So, you know, that's one of those things that, I don't like the increase, but I've, somehow got to be able to support it some kind of way.
Mr. Hudson?
Mark and I have had this discussion, and so, Mark, we're going to have it one more time. I, I did serve as chairman of the school board in Dothan, Alabama, for six years, and during that time's period, we began to have guns in schools for the first time. Superintendent of Education called me, I was chairman at that point in time, and said, "We need to do something, because we're having students bringing guns into our school." And took a recommendation, and that recommendation was that we hire people to come into the schools, that we put magnetrons or whatever you call them that are in the lobby, where students had to go through those things. Interesting thing about it was, I went to the, this was a city school system, and I went to the mayor, and I said, "Can you help us out?" And he says, "You know what, Bob? Y'all set a taxing rate, y'all set a millage rate, and you're concerned, and your job is the safety of those children, your job is the education of those children." So, all those football helmets that you buy for the safety of students, all those buses that you buy for the safety of students, you don't come to me asking me to pay for those, why are you here today? So, we took some money out of reserves, Mark, and then we budgeted that money the next year. So, all I... So all I'm saying, I don't believe there's anybody here that has said that SRDs, SROs are not necessary, needed in the schools today. It's all an issue of who is the appropriate authority to pay for it. Is it your job to pay for schools? Or is it your job to pay for the operation of Walton County? When you compare the two budgets, and you look at the millage rate increases, where have the increases occurred? Yes, state mandates occur, Mark. I understand those. But I do believe y'all have gone up on your local effort as well. And you could have gone up on your local effort to cover this, couldn't you?
I, I wanna, I'm speaking as a school board member here, but I will. I think all of our villages will be at the maximum rate allowed by law. I, I don't know that our local, our local required effort and our, our discretionary millage will be at the highest amount allowed by law. The only one that will not be will be our capital.
Okay. So all I'm saying is, at some point in time, this body has to say, is it my job to run the city of Freeport? Is it my job to run the city of Defuniak Springs? Is it my job to supplement the school system? Because if your decision is you're gonna fund all those things, like I said, South Walton Mosquito Control District is headed your way. Because we'd need, you know, we could use some help too. Y'all take the heat for the millage rate increase. Get it off my back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, excuse me, real quick, I'm actually not gonna speak about the SRDs. There's a phrase in Latin that says, "Raceips sol oculitur." The thing speaks for itself. I believe that's correct. Well, I just want to say real briefly that I'm glad you touched on the issue of coding and amending your code ordinances, that you're looking at that. And I want to let everybody know here that we've had multiple meetings. I think that is really gonna pay benefit over the long term. That's forward thinking on your part, and I think that will help as you get ready to decide in the future if you find a position for code. But from a sheriff's office standpoint, that's vitally important, because as those folks call us, when the, the music's too loud or they have these issues, so we appreciate what you're doing in amending that. And also want to touch on your animal control as well. We've had a very close working relationship with them, and we know in the future that as you evaluate how you work with those folks, you'll continue to get our support. So I'm not gonna touch on the SRDs. I think we're all pretty clear about where we're at from that standpoint, but I did want to touch on the coding portion, because I feel like that is very important as well. Thank you.
And also, boards.
I'll make the motion.
What are we supposed to, let me ask a question. What are we supposed to do tonight?
Do next. We're supposed to set the-
Mr. Chairman, we, we need two motions. One, to set the tentative millage rate, and, including the, the general rate and the North Walton Mosquito Control rate. And then the second motion would be to set a tentative budget.
I'm, I'll make them, oh, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Wanda, from A. Wanda, as you well know how I feel about trying to delve in and using up all the reserves with the end of the, start of a new fiscal year, you've got to fund county operations until the avalorum taxes start coming in. And then the other issue I've always had is in the event of a major disaster such as Hurricane Opal that we had back in 95, that we don't have the reserve funds to pay for whatever we have to do. Now, I believe it was stated earlier, if our reserves on the general fund were reduced and we had a major event, that we could borrow it from the other part of it, or, and pay it back as FEMA comes in. I don't know, Wanda wants to address that bill, whoever, but that's right now is weighing on, on me as to what I want to do as far as the budget.
The money that was borrowed in the past for the, from the TDC was, had to do with the oil spill operations that occurred on the beaches.
Correct.
So yes, they, that, that money was paid from that.
And with regards to beach cleanup after a storm, for cleaning up the beaches and coastal dune lakes, and under state law, TDC money can be used for that. However, everything that's clearing the roads, clearing the right-of-ways, picking up all the debris, that's a county function. And I can tell you that when Hurricane Ivan hit in 2004, the county spent $10.4 million before getting back anything from FEMA.
And that, that's where I'm at. If we have a general fund reserve of, say, $6 million, and that's all, and we have a disaster like that, where do we get the balance from $6 million to $10 million like in Ivan that you're talking about? Without, where do we get it? Can we borrow it from TDC? Probably not. Jim's shaking his head no. Where do we get it, Wanda?
I don't believe, we, we either go out for a loan, or we wait until FEMA feeds us the money.
And during that time, it could wait six, eight months, waiting on FEMA to, and we still got debris, we still got all those issues out there to deal with. Thank you.
Let me, let me just ask a procedural question too. Are we setting a tentative millage rate?
Yes.
And a tentative budget tonight? Now, and it can be changed at the-
It can go down, it can't go up.
It can go down, but it cannot go up. Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Commissioner, may I?
I'll, I'll start. I've, I've heard what everybody said tonight. I'll start with keep, I want to keep the millage rate as it is for one more year, and at 3.5563. And I, I, I do think that the next year will bring an increase in economy. We seem to be picking up as far as, you know, home building and, and that sort of thing. I mean, I know Mr. Bearden's department, for the first time in years, is actually making money, which is how they fund it. I think LOVES will help us next year with, so I'd like to hold the line one more year, and I know that's gonna dip into reserves, but it, hold it at, that's my motion, to hold it at 3.5563.
We gotta give a second. You, you second.
I have a question. Are, is your recommendation then to hold the budget number the same as it was this year? Everybody gets the same amount as this year?
No.
Excuse me.
I'm just-
My question is, are you holding the budget numbers to the same as it was for 2013, plus the state unfunded mandates they passed down? Which, by the way, I noticed there's another $185,000 that they passed down on juvenile justice, at least in the budget numbers here, that we don't set, but the state tells us that, that they gotta pay. So, I mean, we're talking about close to a million and a half that, that the state is saying, we've got to cover. So-
I think, I think we direct staff to find a way to, find a way, find, find what numbers coincide with the 3-point.
And, and Commissioner, you were right when you were talking about, you know, a number of years ago, I started a green committee. You were talking about utilities. Everybody ignored me. We, we came up with suggestions to turning the air conditioner off, turning the computers off. Everybody ignored it, because it's easy to walk out. You know, we need to, to tell staff, you turn your computer off, or, you know. So there are ways, maybe there's not ways to find all of it, but I truly believe that we need to look just a little harder. And I understand your position, so, I understand.
And I appreciate where you're coming from, but the, the point is, once we set the tentative, it can only go in one direction.
I understand.
I would hope that we have a little bit of up, that we can task staff to come and perhaps take it down a little further. But if, if we go right to what we're at, we've got no room to, to look at some of the other costs that have come in for this year. That's my concern. I definitely think we need to come down from what, what was sent out on the TRIM notices. And I just don't know that by keeping it exactly the same, there are, I mean, just as was pointed out, the Consumer Price Index itself went up by some percentages, and we've got to absorb that, we've got to absorb the state unfunded mandates. So rather than, than take it to that, and I realize you've got a motion to second, but I'm just concerned that we now have not given staff any kind of flexibility to deal with what's gonna have to be new costs for this coming year.
And I understand that side as well. I, I just, you know.
I think though, that you-
It's just, go ahead, send him some.
Well, with the 3.55, we still in the general fund, that still leaves us five mil, five and a half million in the general fund. And, and that's, you know, without, without including anything that actually comes in along the way.
Now, that leaves us no room to do any special projects, to do, you know, whatever, you know.
Well, we, we can't, we can't afford it.
Yes, right. We can't afford it.
We can't afford it. I mean, basically, bottom line. And people need to understand too, that, you know, that's where, that's where we are. We can provide the essential services.
And that's it.
And that's it.
All right. So if we move forward to where you're at right now, then we basically don't need to ask staff to do anything?
Well, I think what Cindy was talking about is seeing what they could cut to keep the, pulling out of reserves, am I correct?
Yeah.
That's what my, that's what the direction would be.
Figure out what they can cut to keep the reserves at a reasonable level.
Right.
Yeah. Let's just don't say, oh, we're gonna take it out of reserves. Let's continue to look for, yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Can we give guidance as to where you would like to see them start? I mean, there are some, there are some big increases and some small increases. Sheriff, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I mean, from, from an avalorum tax standpoint, it's one of the larger increases, as is what the state has thrown down on our plate and said, you must pay.
Well, I think that's important, Commissioners, that from a staff position on the components that operate under your purview and under our purview, we're committed to look for every efficiency we can find. But as I mentioned earlier, if we, if we generate those efficiencies, we spoke earlier of perhaps moving to a new code officer. If we do that, as opposed to reducing the amount we would pull from our reserve account, I guess that's, that's the direction staff would like to know, is that where we could save money, do we want to utilize it elsewhere? Do we want to utilize it as, as opposed to drawing down reserve accounts? And we can have that discussion. But I can tell you, staff is committed to identifying efficiencies where we can, making whatever tough decisions need to be made in order to, to preserve as much of the reserve accounts as we can.
And I appreciate that, but one, one of the things I'm concerned about is that if you were to go to the reserves, you're taking a continuing operational cost-
I agree.
And funding it from a one-time revenue stream. And then we're really handcuffing ourselves for the following years.
And, and you're, you're tied right. I mean, if you take the reserve, the general fund reserve down to 5.5 million, the only way you're gonna build it back up in some subsequent year is to generate more revenue than you have expenses.
Well, correct. And, and more importantly, it's gonna have to be the fact that you will also cover a recurring expense that you've got in this year's budget-
Right.
That's gonna be recurring next year, but you funded this year from a one-time revenue stream. Now you gotta find the money to pay for that in subsequent years.
And to, and to replenish your reserves if you so choose to do so, right.
And if you look at the, if you look at the building permit activity this year-
Yeah.
Which will hit, I guess, the avalorum tax rolls next year?
If it's completed by December 36th.
Yeah. But-
So there's certainly some, some things looking up in our favor.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, what we know.
I think the, the future is brighter for us out there right now. You know, I, I mean, I hear what these people, you know, people say about, you know, their income. County commissioners' incomes were cut two years in a row by the state. Didn't cut their salary, by the way. So we understand, when you talk about a fixed income, you know. I, I just, and, and Bill, I do see your point. I certainly see your point and understand. I just, gosh, know how hard it is.
And, and all I'm trying to do is give-
Right.
Is, we could always, if we were to come up somewhere between the 3.5 and the 4.1, tell staff to come back and, and do what they can. At least it gives them the opportunity to factor in those things that we have no control on to cover and see whether we can, we can do that. Again, my, my bigger concern is that if, if they come back and says, well, we've gotta go into reserves, then, then you've got the, the future problem on doing that. And, and some of these things are, are not gonna go away. If you could tell the sheriff, sheriff, cut your budget, or clerk of the court, cut your budget. You can't go tell the state, take back the Medicaid increase, take back the increase you're doing on retirement, we're stuck with that.
Right.
So I, I was just trying to think that if, if we went somewhere in between 4.1 and then told staff to come back and say, if they can't take it down even further, that would give us the ability to have a balance, perhaps of using some reserves and using some, some cost savings and some, some modifications that Mr. Jones has talked about, to try and achieve a, a reasonable budget that nobody's really happy with, but we all are sharing some of the burden of, of the increased costs.
Okay. We have all.
I think, yeah, go ahead.
Just, just very quickly, I, I think it is a, you know, listen, the truth about being at the sheriff's office is expensive business. I mean, it's running jail, sheriff's office, the things that we do is, unfortunately, that's part of it. If you look at our budget as well, when you go down, break it down, statutorily mandated for the most part, outside of the school resource deputies, the pension increases, the insurance increases, those things you face, we all face that as well too. But during that same timeframe, I would ask you to consider this, that, you know, in 2007, give or take, they were doing about 80,000 calls for service. We're gonna bump better than 165,000 this year. And, and we really haven't increased staff. So when you start talking about increasing SRDs, that's not something, as you said, as you well point out, that's not something we use 75% of the time. I just would add that as a caveat from a constitutional officer's side standpoint. We understand that, that the cost of business has gone up as well, so.
I, I think though, that we shouldn't take the brunt of, of all the increases. I think if the constitutional officers' budgets are going up because of the state, then they need to go over to the state and start lobbying hard on the costs that they're increasing, just like we do. We go over there. I mean, we can't, you know, do it all. So, you know, it, it's gonna be up to everybody to, to go over there and do what you-
I know we've taken the first step. You know, we've told the, the cities and the, you know, it's our fire-
Yeah, we have, we have taken a lot of-
Is just gonna pay, you know, pay your own bills from now on.
We've taken a lot of steps.
A lot of that overtime, and which disturbs me, and has always has disturbed me, is sometimes the misuse of overtime with the, the fire department.
Yeah.
But yet, we have to have them. They have to be on call, you know.
And I, I appreciate your motion. I'd like to offer an amendment, and that is to go perhaps where you're going, but to allow the, the millage rate to be modified for those unfunded mandates passed down by the state specifically, the retirement, the Medicaid, and the juvenile justice costs that are reflected here. And that would give, still a mandate to staff to tell us where we're gonna take care of the other things, but, I mean, those are three costs that are just basically totally out of our control, and they're all increases.
I mean, what'd you just say?
I, I wanted to amend, I wanted to amend, you were taking it to 3.5563. So if that's going to be on the table, since it's been second, I was gonna offer an amendment that says, comma, you're gonna have to determine what the factor would be to allow a slight backing up for those fund, for those costs that the state itself is mandating us to pay. Not any other, other county costs that we're talking about right now. Staff can come back and analyze what they want to do with that, but-
And that would-
And that modifies it to 3.5563-
To what?
To 3.5563 plus whatever it takes to cover those state mandated costs.
Well, are the state mandated costs that 1.25 million? Is that what that is? The state mandated?
Mr. Beinca, can you calculate that number four?
No, I'm relying on the finance directors for doing it. But however, but what, what it does is, and I know she'd have to do it in the morning, when you add back what the costs are that you've got to come to at 3.5563, and then say, okay, to get the, the, the new millage factor, let's just add solely those, those costs that are being imposed on us by the state above and beyond. And then we've got, I, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be around 3.6 something that it would, that would come in, and that's just a seat of the pants guess. And, and the reason I say it is, I'm thinking, look at the difference between, the difference between the general fund millage rate at 3.75 and the general fund millage rate at 3.5563, and, and lets us then address the costs that we have some say on in giving staff direction to work on that before the next meeting, but not just to totally say, we, we've been running lean for four or five years, and now we're gonna let the state come in and add a million and a half, $2 million to our costs, and we've still gotta run even leaner. And that's what it would amount to. So that would be my amendment to, I make, I make a motion to add, to amend your-
Can you make that?
A motion to amend the motion.
I don't mean to interrupt with the legality, but I think we're gonna have to come up with a millage amount, not because-
Yeah, we have to, yes.
...in terms of adopting tentative millage numbers.
Well, we got a motion.
I just, I don't want to see us do the budget that way. I mean, I think, you know-
I see what he's saying.
They could, I know, but they could add on 4 million next year, and then what are we gonna do? Just keep upping it because of the state keeps upping our budget? I think we need to...
I don't know if we have any choices, but what I'm trying to at least accomplish is, is I'm recognizing the comments we've received from all the citizens.
Yeah, I, I realize that.
And the fact that we're all being hit by this, and we've gotta pay taxes ourselves on our properties.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we're, we're asking, I, I go back to the, the same thing. You're asking for recurring costs to be covered by a one-time funding source, which is, is gonna come out the bite us in the future.
Mr. Hudson, have you done the math in your head?
But that funding, I think there's funding sources, I think things are gonna go, things are getting better. The gas taxes are gonna go up.
I understand, uh, Commissioner Enfield's desire, don't get me wrong, but I think if you'll read state statute, you'll find that you must set a millage rate today, not a millage rate that the staff can adjust as they see fit tomorrow. So, if, if it's three four, five, five, six, three, it's three point five, five, six, three, and you're right, it, it sets it. But I do wanna add one thing real quickly. For those of you who think that your constitutional officers have increases in their budgets, let me read you what their budgets are. Supervisor of elections is only at four point oh six. Property appraiser is down seven point oh eight. Tax collector is down fifteen point seven nine. Public defender, down twenty-five point ninety-eight. State attorney, down point eight, four percent. And what I'm saying is, if you think you're going to the constitutional officers and cut them back to where they were last year, those constitutional officers have already, it appears to me, have reflected some type of realization that they needed to tighten their belt to some degree. But my only reason for standing up is, is no, I, I, Mr. Davis, I, I do not believe you can do what Mr. Enfield is asking. I understand, Bill, what you're saying. You can pick three point seven five and then come down from there, but you can't walk out of this room without...
I agree, Mr. Hudson. What I was trying to recognize is the fact that there's a motion and a second on the floor, and if it passes as stated, then we can't, we can't then come back at the next meeting and say, "Oh, we need to bump it up just a hair." I mean, it's, that's the max.
You are absolutely correct, Bill. Once you set the number today, it cannot go up.
And, and...
Other, there are certain circumstances by which it can go up.
And Mr. Hudson, I was really kinda talking about the constitutional officers who were looking to increase their budgets this year. Uh, that's what I was really talking about.
That's a very limited number.
It, it is, but it's...
Primarily the sheriff's part.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's a, a big number.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, you still gotta pass a tentative budget?
Yeah, okay.
We need a resolution on the budget.
You have to set the millage rate for the mosquito control district?
Yes. Yeah, the three point five, five, six, three, motion passed, correct? Three, two...
Yeah.
Right. The millage rate will not be any greater than it was last year.
Right, right.
Uh, need a motion to...
Mosquito control.
Mosquito control? What's the millage rate on mosquito control? But I, we have to, we have to say it, don't we?
Point four nine, one, two.
The mosquito control millage rate be zero point four nine, one, two, bills. Same as last year.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You gotta adopt the budget.
That's correct. We need to, we need to adopt a tentative budget based on the millage rate.
Not need to adopt a tentative budget? Do I hear a motion?
That means we can cut it, we just tentative for the budget.
You, you adopt a tentative budget tonight, based on the millage rate that you have set. That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Whatever you say.
Motion and a second?
Yes.